Hi, any post? I'd also like to share that we did have an executive session this evening before the meeting regarding a legal matter. First up this evening is actually Sue Walker, who's joining us from Zoom. Is she on, Rachel? Thank you very much. Well, can you hear us, Ms. Walker?
I can. Can you? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we'll get Rachel. Yeah, we can hear you just fine. Thank you very much and welcome. Sue Walker is the District Director and Deputy Chief of Staff to U.S. Representative Chrissy Houlihan. Representative Houlihan serves Pennsylvania's 6th Congressional District, which includes Kennett Square. She has an office in Washington, DC and a local district office at 709 East Gay Street in Westchester. Representative Houlihan, as probably many folks know, is an Air Force veteran. She's an engineer, entrepreneur, and educator. And she's the first woman ever to represent Pennsylvania's 6th District in Congress. She's committed to fighting for access to quality and affordable healthcare, common sense, gun safety, government accountability, and transparency. Representative Houlihan sits on the House Armed Services Committee, the Subcommittee on Military Personnel, and is the ranking member of the Quality of Life Panel. She also sits on the Subcommittee on Strategic Forces, the House Permanent Select Committee on Intelligence, and is the ranking member of the Defense Intelligence and Overhead Architecture Subcommittee. Representative Houlihan in her office played an integral part in helping the borough secure nearly $960,000 for our wastewater treatment plant, our sewer plant. She also was instrumental in helping the library gain a $750,000 grant for its construction, the new library. We welcome Sue as Representative Houlihan's representative. We'd love you to kind of give us a feel for some of the key initiatives that your office or her office is going after, and especially as they impact the borough and what we can be doing to better work together perhaps. Welcome.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much for having me here tonight. And I know it took us a little bit of time to get the schedule. It wasn't available last month. So, thank you so much for your patience with scheduling initiatives. So, and also that was a great introduction, just as far as Chrissy's background, what she's done, who she is as an individual. But I think as far as her biography, one of the things that you can pick up on, there's a common thread there of service. So whether it's as an educator, as a veteran, you know, someone who has served us in the Air Force, now is her time as a congressional representative. Service to her community is really, really important. And that's even threaded through with her background as an entrepreneur in the ways that the company that she helped to create, that she was the chief operating officer for, and one that was based in Paoli. Doing some of the things that we see now as responsible entrepreneurship of giving back to the community, making sure that the workforce there had things like childcare and ability to go and do things that I hope for most workplaces are sort of common sense now, that if you need time to get to a doctor's appointment or to get to your kid's sporting event, there's a little bit of leeway. So, having that service and just that really pragmatic purpose about her is something that she's always stood by. So, I really appreciate that value in her biography. I would say just as a way of what we can do to support the borough of Kennett and the surrounding area, our Congressional 6th District is all of Chester County through some redistricting, excuse me, that was done back in 2017 into 2018. We're now all of Chester County. So, having those compact contiguous and constitutional district lines are really important. And we also have the southern portion of Berks County as our Congressional 6th District. It's essentially the city of Reading on down, on South Ward in Berks County. So, it's a really diverse community that we serve as the federal representative and that Chrissy serves. It's everything from suburban to urban and a whole lot of agriculture. And I don't need to tell you all in Kennett that because you're, of course, the home of the Mushroom Festival. So, having a lot of that agriculture as a grounding force in our economy is really important. So, looking a little bit back and a little bit ahead at the same time, just as far as legislative initiatives, there was an amazing amount, I think historically speaking, of legislation that was passed in the previous Congress. We're in the 118th Congress right now. It's measured in two-year terms. The 117th Congress had a lot of really generational investments that were made to our communities overall. And I believe in Kennett in particular, you're seeing some of those investments from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. So, this is funding that really hadn't been tended to in probably a couple of generations, very frankly. So, these are our roads, our bridges, our waterways, our port systems, our drinking water, our broadband infrastructure, which no one thought of, you know, really two decades or so ago. These are things that really matter. So, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act created funding for those things to bring us really fully into the 21st century. As you guys know, I shouldn't say guys, but as you all know, that you can't just snap your fingers and all of a sudden a roadway is repaved or a roadway is widened or a bridge is shored up. That takes time to develop. So, that Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which was passed in the 117th Congress, we're now seeing some of those projects come really into fruition in our area. And those are projects largely managed by PennDOT. That federal funding was put forward for individual states, Departments of Transportation to manage and facilitate. So, we've seen some of those things in the roundabouts. That's at 926 and 41. That was an IIJA project. There's a covered bridge in the Elk Township area that is finally getting rebuilt after Hurricane Ida. And those are from IIJA funds as well. Just to give you a couple of examples on that. Many, many roads have been resurfaced. I live in Southern Chester County myself that have been the beneficiaries of the IIJA Act. So, we're looking forward as we move forward with those things. So, looking at some other initiatives that have taken place, the PACT Act was also passed in the 117th Congress. That is a lot more healthcare funding for our veterans, particularly those that have been exposed to burn pits. And this legislation in particular took away the burden of a timeline as to when that exposure might have taken place. So, it really increased the availability for who would be available to this particular spate of healthcare and also the funding of the disability purposes of each veteran. The PACT Act in particular has a particular carve-out that's special to our community and a lot of other communities. Again, Southern Chester County, we've had the loss of two key hospitals in our area. One, the Jennersville Hospital, and the other one being the Brandywine Hospital. Both of them Tower Health properties. As you probably all know, Penn Medicine is trying to bring an urgent care or an emergency care division back to the Coatesville area. They're able to do this through a particular clause that is in the PACT Act, which gives teaching hospitals, educational hospitals, which Penn Medicine is one of, the ability to partner in a public-private partnership with the VA to essentially allow the VA to lease space from a teaching hospital. So, through this mechanism of the PACT Act, it is Penn Medicine's intention to bring that sort of ED or emergency room practice back to the Coatesville area. And it would be a shared space between the Coatesville VA, Penn Medicine, and also allowing space for Chester County because the needs of their morgue and the coroner's office have really been outdated and outmoded for a number of years now. So, it will serve all three purposes, but that is particularly through a carve-out with the PACT Act. So, we're, again, hoping to see these things. And I just had a call yesterday with Penn Medicine to receive an update from them as to where they are focusing in on and how they can move this forward. While we're on the topic of hospitals, one of the other things, and we'll talk about this a little bit later on, are the Jennersville Hospital, which is in West Grove, of course. And they're getting funding from ARPA funds that the Chester County Commissioners allocated to that. So, Christiana Cares is in process of renovating that particular property, getting it up to speed again, and rightsizing it for the needs of the community. So, understandably, healthcare is a hugely important topic for our community, not just for those of us that are in the working age group, but for those of us who have kids at home. It's always that, you know, when my kids were small, I used to say to them, you know, "How far are we from the hospital? Think twice about what you're doing right now." And it's a true thing. I think that's every parent's worst fear is having to make that rush to an emergency room at some, you know, horrible hour. We're really at a deficit right now in Southern Chester County for those emergency services. So, hopefully with both the funding from ARPA to go to what had been the Jennersville Hospital, which is now owned by Christiana Cares, and what Penn Medicine is doing for the Coatesville property, what had been the Brandywine Hospital, we will have those emergency services back in Chester County again. So, continuing on with other advancements, again, going back to the 117th Congress, the Chips and Science Act, which is something, it's a piece of legislation that will ensure microchip manufacturing, bring those microchips back to the states. We all remember those days of COVID when supply chains were stuck. You couldn't get a new car. You couldn't get a dishwasher. All of the things that really, you know, we've grown to depend upon. Having those microchips manufactured here in the United States is key. It's also going to bring a lot of jobs of all levels, not just for those that need a college degree, to have chips manufacturing back in the United States again. So, that was another development from the 117th. The other key piece of legislation I would like to highlight from the last Congress was the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act. For those of you with kids in school, for those of you who work with law enforcement, and I know a good many of you on this panel do, this is hugely important legislation that does a number of things to reduce draw purchases of guns, to increase counseling services for our kids in school, those that are troubled and might be thinking of either harming themselves or harming someone else. It also helps to shore up our school buildings, to make them more secure, and really importantly, gives resources to those in law enforcement for counseling for themselves, for coping skills, for how to deal with crisis situations. There is a ton of good stuff in the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act because what we want to do is not just deal with violence when it happens. What we really want to do is prevent it from happening, and that's the purpose of this legislation. So, that's hugely important. Just to touch back for a quick second on the American Rescue Plan Act, that's those ARPA funds. That's something that was voted back in, in the 117th Congress. These are federal funds that are federal congressional representatives and was passed by President Biden and Vice President Harris to make sure that communities across the country had access to funds to help them recover specifically from COVID, but also to invest back in their communities. This is a program very specifically that is not managed by the federal government. Chrissy's role on this was to say, yes, this is definitely a need. These are definitely funds that are necessary for our communities to grow and thrive and succeed in the 21st century. And how that worked is it was then rolled out to states, and in particular, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania then allocated those funds to individual counties and in some circumstances to cities if they were a large population. So, Philadelphia got their own pot of money. The city of Reading got their own tranche of money as well. But the Chester County Commissioners in particular, they've received millions of dollars to put forward and to invest into our community here at home and allocated that from anywhere from small businesses to grant programs for small businesses, to community care facilities like Kennett Area Community Services, to our library systems, to local food banks. The 988 line for crisis counseling was funded by ARPA funds. The updates that were made to the Chester County prison, for example, were made with ARPA funds. So, those are just some of those examples that we can point to that were funded with ARPA funds, which are, again, federal dollars that were then allocated to local communities, local counties, and up to the discretion of the county commissioners. So, I just want to take a quick pause there because I feel like I've said a lot in a brief amount of time and just say that it is really, it's important in our role as federal representatives to have really good relationships with our local officials as well. It's an amazing thing to see the work of the county commissioners and other county representatives who have been able to very wisely take a look. And I know Chester County, I think they still have a listing of the ARPA expenditures that they've put forward to say, this is where these funds are needed. This is where we believe this to be true. And there was a lot of individual local input as well as to help them make those decisions. And that really is key, and that was truly the intention of this. And I applaud the Chester County Commissioners for their transparency in that, to say, this is what we've done with taxpayer money. Because I think that is something that everybody would really like to know and see. See it in action and see how it's being administered. Taking a pause right there, I've talked a lot about the 117th Congress. I really haven't mentioned very much about the 118th Congress, the Congress that we're currently in. It is unfortunately a very different landscape that we have right now than we did a couple of years ago. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of division and lack of willingness, I think, to get things done for the good of the American people. And I can fully say that Chrissy's very frustrated by that. Historically, this 118th Congress has been one of the least productive in modern history as far as what they have been able to accomplish for the good of the American people. I know she touched on that in her State of the Sixth Address this past January. I'm hoping that this coming January, when she provides that address again, we'll have a different story to tell. But it is frustrating that there has been not as much accomplished as she would hope, whether it's on the topic of immigration, whether it's on getting the government funded and getting past the brinkmanship that we seem to find ourselves in every few months with continuing resolution after continuing resolution. But it is very frustrating to not have the bipartisanship and the goodwill that she really prides herself on and holds herself accountable to. On the level of bipartisanship, Chrissy is in the top 5% of all members of Congress on a bipartisanship scale, meaning things that she has voted for, things that she has co-sponsored. She is in that top 5%. Something called the Luger Scale, named after Dick Luger, who was a famously bipartisan representative. And so, she really does pride herself on being able to say anything that she's putting forward or standing by, or the majority of things, the vast majority of things, and she's in the top 5% have been bipartisan in nature. So, she feels that that really reflects not just her values, but the values of our community. We are, as she says, a very purple place. From a voting registry standpoint, we're about 40% Republican, about 40% Democratic, and about 20% Independent, roughly speaking. So, we are really one of those few congressional districts that have a mixture of viewpoints. And it's her job to represent all of them. So, being bipartisan is something that she really, really feels strongly about. The other, one of the other things I just wanted to touch on very quickly is what we can do as your public servants from a federal perspective. We do have two offices in Pennsylvania. One of them is in Westchester, right on Gay Street. The other one is in Reading on Penn Street. For those of you, and I say this to the borough as a whole, if there's a grant that you're pursuing, if there's a way that we can be helpful, if you are having a situation with infrastructure or anything else, please reach out to us and let us know about it. Each of you is an individual as well. If you have a need with help for Social Security or the VA or the IRS or any other federal agency, you as individuals, anyone who is on this call right now, can reach out to our office and request assistance with a federal agency. If you need a passport and you're, you know, you need that emergency appointment, we've had hundreds of cases like that over the past couple of years as our economy and our travel lines have also opened up again. So, if there's any way that we can be helpful to you, please let us know. I'm really proud to say that Chrissy and our office, we are three-time Democracy Award winners. The Congressional Management Foundation does something annually called the Democracy Awards, and we've won three times. We've won for constituent services. We've won for transparency and accountability. And we've won with what their equivalent is of a best workplace. So, it's, we take a tremendous amount of pride in the work that we do, in the services that we provide to our community, regardless of who somebody is or where they sit in our community. If they need our help, we want to be there to help them. Over the last almost six years now, we've opened and closed almost 9,000 cases. That's those individual requests for help. And we've returned over $58 million back to our community in the form of Social Security benefits, IRS claims, VA claims, SBA claims that they've needed help with, and anything along that line. So, please do keep that in mind if you need assistance. Chrissy also really believes, as I mentioned, the Democracy Awards for Transparency and Accountability. She believes town halls are one of the best ways that she can do that and be available to her community. She's held 91 of them, just forgetting what today is. But I think just last week, we held our 91st Town Hall. And that was a Medicare Town Hall to make sure that people had the resources necessary to, if they needed to enroll, if they had questions about their enrollment. So, looking ahead as far as goals for next year, she's really hoping to have a more efficient Congress in place and be able to work more for the good of the American people and have a broader consensus to move legislation forward. Inflation is certainly top of mind for all of us. It's top of mind for her too. With the New Democratic Coalition, a couple of years back, she produced an inflation-fighting plan that Forbes Magazine said was one of the best inflation-fighting plans that they had ever seen. She's working continually on the topic of paid leave, which is hugely important to many, many families, to have that time that they can leave their job for a period of time, whether they're a mom or a dad, and spend time with their child to have that and not be afraid of losing their employment opportunity. And she's doing that bipartisanly with Representative Stephanie Bice from Oklahoma. I would say also, just going back to, we need to continue to work on these issues. They're shared issues. Potholes don't care if someone's a Republican or a Democrat. We need roads that work. So, she'll continue to lean in on issues like infrastructure, like manufacturing, making sure that everyone has access to a good education from our county colleges, technical high schools, because not every job out there needs a four-year degree. So, education hugely important. And also continuing to make sure to the very best of her ability that our healthcare options are affordable. And that's one note that I didn't touch on, that's with the Inflation Reduction Act, making sure that prescription prices stay down. That was a huge win to being able to have that negotiated and managed to have prescription drug prices. And they'll be continuing to come out in different levels to lower those prices, particularly for our seniors. So, I have done a lot of talking in a short amount of time. I appreciate your patience and I am happy to answer, or at least attempt to answer, any questions that you might have.
Sue, we're gonna, first and foremost, on behalf of the mayor, the council, and the residents and folks that are here in the audience tonight, thank you very, very much. And to Representative Houlihan for all you've done for our area, for Kennett Square specifically, for the grant money for the library, for the sewer plant. Thank you very, very much. We are going to get going on with the agenda because we have an awful lot to go this evening. But thank you so much for joining us and being part of our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Take care.
All right. And now, a couple of our local heroes. We'd love to recognize some folks that go above and beyond to make Kennett Square what it is in terms of, as the representatives, representatives said, the mushroom capital, but also in terms of making sure that all of our residents are cared for and watched out for. Mr. Mayor?
Thanks. Tonight, we're going to recognize two different groups. The first is the Mushroom Festival Committee and also the Domestic Violence Center for Chester County. So, we're going to start with the Mushroom Festival Committee. As you know, the Mushroom Festival continues to be one of the best and most probably famous events that we have throughout Kennett Square Borough with all of the different festivals we have. Incredibly well-attended, and it takes a heck of a lot of work from a lot of volunteers to really work through and work through all the details. I get the fun part of the last 24 hours before we kick off, dealing with the last little bit of complaints and things like that. And Jean and I spent a lot of time calling and texting, working through that. And I see a fraction of the challenges that they get to go through, and they work incredibly hard. And last year, and I don't know, you probably don't know awards yet for this year, I would guess, right? But last year, you gave out over $100,000 in grants back to the community, which is an incredible amount of money. I mean, $100,000 right into a direct impact into our community is really something that you need to be incredibly proud of. So, not only is it a fun day, not only does it recognize an industry that is still the economic engine for Southern Chester County by far, but it impacts so many different nonprofits. So, thank you so much. We're going to give you a citation tonight, and I'm going to read it for you. "Honoring the 39th Annual Mushroom Festival in the Borough of Kennett Square, whereas the Mushroom Festival celebrated all things mushroom with the 39th Annual Mushroom Festival, held on September 7th and 8th in the Borough of Kennett Square. And whereas the Mushroom Festival provides an annual opportunity to celebrate mushrooms in many ways, from learning about mushroom growing to trying a variety of mushroom-centric foods, to visiting the many craft vendors and boutiques, to enjoying the variety of restaurant options and more. Whereas the Mushroom Festival has grown from one-day local celebration to a nationally recognized two-day festival that attracts thousands of visitors to the Borough of Kennett Square each year. And whereas the, excuse me, with the help of many dedicated volunteers, the festival has grown into one of the largest and most prestigious events in Pennsylvania. Whereas the Mushroom Festival's grant program, which has now provided $1.1 million in grants to local nonprofit organizations in Kennett Square, all of the Mushroom Festival proceeds. And whereas there are many things to enjoy at the Mushroom Festival, but at its core, the Mushroom Festival is an opportunity for the Kennett Square Mushroom Farms to give back to the community in which they work and live, with a chance to highlight the businesses and the groups that support the Kennett Square community, including the mushroom farms that employ many people and the businesses and restaurants that support the Borough of Kennett Square. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Matthew Fettick, the mayor of the Borough of Kennett Square, share a sincere gratitude for the organizers of the Mushroom Festival, for the producers and growers, and for the staff and volunteers of the Mushroom Festival who have developed and run the festival for the community to enjoy." So, thank you. And you guys, you should all stand up so we all know who is here, who volunteers with the board and everything else. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, you guys do the work and we get to have the fun. So, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Not really, but thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And next, we're going to do the Domestic Violence Center. Is there anybody from the Domestic Violence Center here? Okay, well, I'm going to read the proclamation because we want you all to know and make sure that you understand what Domestic Violence Awareness Month is all about. So Domestic Violence Awareness Month for October 2024. Whereas domestic violence impacts our families, homes, communities, schools, and workplaces on a daily basis. Whereas ending violence in the home and at work and in the community requires vigilance and dedication from every part of our society. And whereas Domestic Violence Month evolved from the Day of Unity observed in October 1981 by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence. And whereas in 1987, the Coalition observed the first Domestic Violence Awareness Month, the same year that the first national toll-free hotline for domestic violence victims was established. And whereas during the month of October, victim advocate groups, centers, service workers, and many other organizations come together to connect with those who worked to end domestic violence, to celebrate those who have survived, and to mourn those who have died as a result of domestic violence. And whereas it is critical that those seeking help or services have access to proper care and treatment. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is an opportunity to stand with domestic violence survivors to celebrate the progress made in combating these crimes and to recommit to reducing domestic violence here in the Commonwealth. Now therefore, I, Matthew Fettick, the mayor of the Borough of Kennet Square, on this ninth day of October 2024, to hereby proclaim October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the Borough of Kennet Square and call upon all residents to speak out against domestic violence in our community and to support the efforts of the Domestic Violence Center of Chester County in their efforts to assist victims of these crimes in finding the help and healing that they need. So if you would keep this month in mind and continue to look at Domestic Violence Center as a resource for anybody that needs it, they have great resources on the website for anybody that needs to reach out. So thank you for the opportunity to recognize them.
Mr. President, just to add, just a reminder that tomorrow night is the light of night for hope and healing, domestic violence will be here in the parking lot at the, at the tree folk.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very nice. And thanks to the Mushroom Committee folks for being here as well.
Chief, what time is that tomorrow?
It is 6:45. 6:45, there'll be a moment of silence at 7:00 PM, and then there's remarks and presenters. Myself as well will be there presenting. District Attorney's offices will be represented. LCH is coming to have a discussion. Senator Kane and Representative Sappi will be here as well.
Thank you very much, Chief. Next item is the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda items on this evening's agenda?
So moved?
For a second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Couple of action items before we get to our workshops. The first is a consideration of the 600 South Broad Street lease for the Kennet Community Grocer. Any discussion from council? I, I think trying to sum up at least what some of the council had concerns with is not, not the concept, or actually not the use of the first floor of this building or a portion of it for the community grocer. I think most, if not everyone, is thrilled at that concept as well as a number of folks in the community. I think the challenge is what it seems the grocer can afford versus what the Borough Council feels responsibility to try to obtain for the, for the building itself because of the large nut, a cost of purchasing and paying for this building. So with that, is there any, any comment from anyone in the audience? Edie, Louise Collis, or anyone else that would like to say anything? Is there a motion to approve the lease for the Kennet Community Grocer? There's, there's, there's not a motion, so we're not going to vote on it. But we hope the dialogue and discussion continues on beyond this evening in, in earnest to try to get to something that we can both live with. Next item on the agenda.
Can I say a word, Bob?
Sure.
I just want to say, I really struggled with, with this one, but the truth is, this building is an asset of the taxpayers of the Borough of Kennet Square. And so I have an obligation to put it to the best use for the taxpayers and our real estate agents are advising us that market rate is quite a bit higher than what you're proposing. And I don't feel comfortable that the taxpayers would really support subsidizing the co-op. As great as I would personally love to have the co-op, I, just as a steward of the taxpayer dollars and this building as a taxpayer asset, I, I just don't feel comfortable with that. You know, with that rate. So that's where I am.
Next, next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the 2023 audit. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we closed it. You want to say something now?
Chair of, Board Chair of Kennet Community Grocer, I just wanted to thank you for your time, your consideration. We at Kennet Community Grocer, our board has spent a great deal of time with this as well. We don't want to open a store that cannot be sustainable for 10 years because there's so much that has to go into creating this, because it's owned by the community. So our fiduciary responsibility is now to the people who have joined as members, but also to the community who will shop here. And we don't want to spend $2.5 million to renovate this building on the first floor and then find that we cannot sustain it. And as you right now, there's a storm happening tonight, which is going to really impact wholesale pricing all over the country for the next two or three years. Food is very difficult to put onto the shelves and sell in a sustainable way. So we thank you for your efforts and we do, we do at Kennet Community Grocer appreciate your position. Thank you.
Thank you, Edie. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the 2023 audit. We, we heard that last month. This is more of a formality, but we need to accept the audit on behalf of the council. So is there a motion to accept the 2023 audit of the Borough of Kennet Square?
I'll move to accept the audit results.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous for the record. Public comment. Would anyone like to make a general comment for something that's not on the agenda this evening? No, anyone? Louise?
Tie back to Susan Walker. The ARPA funds. I, I just want the community to know that Casey's Cause, which is a local nonprofit, is been a recipient of some ARPA funds to $245,000. What do, what do we do with that money? What we do is we provided recovery house stays for those in transition that have been affected by substance use disorder and have maybe gone through treatment, may be have been jailed for some period of time but are looking to be reintroduced into the society to be productive citizens. And so our funds are given to those recovery houses that are in good standing. And they provide a week's worth of residence support, transportation, meals, taken to job interviews so that they can be introduced back into the communities. And some are in there longer than the week, a couple of months, six months. But we do our best with the help of ARPA funds and our own fundraising. We just finished the, our, our annual car show. We had 705 cars registered and showed up at the auto mall at Morgan Hill. And that raised for us $14,000, $14,831 this past Saturday. So those funds, in addition to the ARPA funds, go right back to the community that has the most need. And these community folks, they're amongst us. And they need the respect and the support that, that they should be receiving from all of us as community members. We support our community and we try to get them back on a productive levels. So I just wanted the group to understand what just happened, and that was triggered by Sue Walker's comments. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Louise. Any other comments? With that, let's get into the workshops this evening. And welcome to very good friends and supporters of Kennet Square, Kevin Myers and Mary Frances McGarity. Kevin first, coming up, come on up, Kevin, is going to talk about the importance of a comprehensive plan to Kennet Square. It's a, it's a, it's an every 10-year obligation that every municipality has. In trying to look at what we need to be doing, both from an economic standpoint and the growth and development of the borough over the next 10 years. Thanks for being here, Kevin.
No problem. Okay. Thanks again for that introduction. I'm Kevin Myers, the urban planner for the Chester County Planning Commission. I know I'm familiar with some of you, but maybe not all of you. I've also had the, the great pleasure of working with the borough many times over my tenure at the planning commission going on 26 years, including assisting with the drafting of both the 2001 and, which seems like a long time ago, obviously now, but and the 2013, which is the existing Borough Comprehensive Plan and serving as grant monitor on, on other projects such as the Kennet Region Economic Development Study. As, as sure you might be aware, the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code is the state enabling legislation for planning here in Pennsylvania and as well for comprehensive plans. And the MPC requires that municipal comprehensive plans are reviewed every 10 years. And I would defer to your solicitor, but I note that the MPC uses the word review, not update. However, I would say that most municipalities do in fact update their plans on that regular 10-year basis as it is good practice and a, and a good opportunity to make sure that plans are current and taking into account changes that happen over time and to properly guide the communities. As I'm sure you're also aware, Chester County provides funding for updating comprehensive plans as well as many other projects, and the borough has taken advantage of those fundings over time and in fact has a current grant for the State Street Revitalization Project, which will kick off next Thursday. And I'm glad to once again serve the borough as grant monitor for yet another project, which is fantastic. And while comprehensive plan updates might seem like an arduous task, and indeed they do take time and effort, I would say that most, if not all municipalities, consider it a worthwhile update. I think one good way to look at a comprehensive plan is as a community conversation for the municipality to take the opportunity to engage residents, business owners, and other stakeholders to address challenges and bring them to light and as well come up with opportunities that whether the borough comes up with it, or there's some residents that have some bright ideas that maybe you haven't thought of. And, and create a fresh vision, goals, objectives, and recommendations to guide the community for the next 10 years. Undertaking a plan is a great way to educate and engage the community. You know, a lot of times you have newer residents or people that just aren't familiar with government. And so having a comprehensive plan process is a good way to engage those folks and give them opportunity to bring them up to speed and as well give them a voice. So it's a good way to gather feedback and promote a unified vision, so everybody's on the same page. And particularly when that time and effort is taken for the community engagement. And I would say, just anecdotally, you know, what you put into the plan is what you get out of it. And as well, you know, I think a lot of municipalities use their comprehensive plan as a checklist to guide what they do in the, in the future and as well to guide their accomplishments, their goals and objectives. It's kind of a checklist for, for guidance for the community moving forward. More recently, comprehensive plan updates have utilized what's called the Implementable Plan Technique. The MPC outlines 13 areas that a comprehensive plan is required to include: transportation, housing, natural resource protection, historic resources, et cetera. And while a plan has to accommodate all those things, but at the same time, a plan isn't required to treat all those equally, or to have a planned chapter on each one of those or follow that in a linear fashion. But instead, different topics could receive different treatment based on your priorities. So you still have to accommodate all those different topical areas, but some can receive more attention. Others can be of a higher priority and the plan can focus on those things. And so, and that way, a, a plan process can be more targeted, more focused, and maybe not as, as large of a plan as maybe some of our plans have been in the past. So we've kind of changed and morphed tactics over the past, a different way of looking at comprehensive planning over time. And the comprehensive plan is an opportunity to identify needs, project and opportunities for funding, which is obviously very important. And in fact, many grant applications require projects to be in a municipal comprehensive plan to even be eligible for funding. And so for that reason, comprehensive plans are important, and as well for, for other applications and again, guiding the goals and objectives of the community. From an economic development standpoint, the borough has an urban centers revitalization plan that was adopted in conjunction with your 2013 comprehensive plan and as well has the Kennet Region Economic Development Study. So you already have a good track record going. But I would say that a comprehensive plan just in and of itself is an economic development plan from a broader perspective, as it covers all of those topics in a more holistic manner. So all of those things, natural resource protection, transportation improvements, infrastructure improvements, historic resources can work together to support more specific economic development initiatives such as the Kennet Region Economic Development Study, your nonprofits like Kennet Collaborative, and then even more specific initiatives that the borough would be interested in accomplishing. I know Mary Frances will follow me here and, and she'll probably provide some good insight into what some of those things could be. And so you could say that your comprehensive plan is a high-level holistic perspective on economic development. And I'll just end with saying that, just for an example, West Grove Borough updated their comprehensive plan, which had urban centers revitalization MLLment in 2022. And then Oxford Borough recently adopted and updated a plan that has a specific economic development chapter in February of this year, and both of those boroughs have already applied for and been awarded significant funding to start implementing their plans already. So just as a, some example of some, some recent projects to follow. So open up for questions and answers, and if I could afterwards, I have a couple highlights of things I just wanted to specifically mention before I'm done. So questions?
Thanks, thanks, Kevin. Thanks for coming out and missing the Phillies game tonight.
No, that's okay.
Much appreciated. Ed, what's the score?
We're all watching it on our iPad.
What's the score, Ed?
So we're still winning, right?
Maybe we extend this meeting tonight.
Time of mourning after.
Kevin, I saw that Oxford literally just a couple of weeks ago approved their plan, or at least I read, read about it.
In February.
Are there takeaways from sort of this generation of, of, of plans that you've seen?
Sure.
That you would say the borough should really take a look at or, or, or think about when we get into the process?
Yeah, again, it's, you know, sorry for using planerese. It's that, it's that, spit it out. Implementable Plan Technique. Again, for a long time, admittedly, us as planners, we followed the MPC and we followed it just as it says. There's a plan for transportation. There's a plan for X, Y, and Z, and the plan literally had those exact chapters. You know, but we realized that, you know, of course we have to copy. We have to cover all those topics and, and while we should, but some municipalities, it's just, some of those things just aren't as much of a priority or, or you have more critical need in a certain area. And so we have to accommodate all of those topics. But you don't have to have equal parts on each one of those. And so, you know, the technique now is to figure out what the highlights, a couple of chapters that are really what you want to focus in on and have those chapters be the bulk of your plan with those other areas maybe incorporated, you know, into those other planned chapters, but maybe just not as heavy. And so you can expend the bulk of your effort on those areas that are most important or most challenging for your specific community. And that way, again, plans are, are shorter than we used to be because we used to just admittedly be a little too wordy, a little too heavy, and we're trying to figure out how to become more targeted. And as well, I'd say becoming more creative and, and getting as well back to that focus on community engagement because the plan's for the community, right? And you want to engage all your stakeholders and, you know, people have a lot of distractions and there's, there's enough things to do out there. And so, you know, it's really important though, obviously, to expend time in hearing what all your different stakeholders and, and making sure you engage those people that typically you don't hear from and make an effort really to try to reach those folks. So everybody kind of has an equal voice.
When, when you look at the, sort of the economic reality of a borough as compared to a township, just our economic makeup is, is fundamentally different in some of the things we have as expenses, you know, full-time police, lots of fire and EMS needs, housing needs, a lot of older infrastructure. Who are the benchmarks that the Borough of Kennet Square should use? Is it, is it Westchester? Is it Phoenixville? Is it, who, who are the, who should we look at?
I mean, I, I always, you know, I'll, I'll follow this up on one of my, my ending points is that, you know, as you know, I, I run urban centers forum every year. And, and not that that should be the only opportunity, but I always encourage municipalities just to talk to one another. You don't have to wait to do your comprehensive plan update every 10 years to talk with other municipalities that have been where you're at in a certain aspect. I can serve as a, as a facilitator of that in, in some cases, but I would encourage, you know, Kyle and, and other, and other folks just to, you know, call another municipality and say, hey, we have this issue. Have you had this issue?
Are there specific boroughs that you would point us to that maybe we're not familiar with that you are?
I mean, I mean, Phoenixville and Westchester are both good examples. In certain cases, they've had I've been exploring Westchester, both good examples. In certain cases, they've had, they've taken two different paths, not to want to go too deep into this conversation, uh, we could, um, in, in parking, for example. Um, both municipalities have kind of taken a different path, um, in, in that and are kind of ironing out and, and parking is the whole, is the whole conversation. Uh, I would say that there's, there's no silver bullet for parking, uh, just to be clear. Um, everybody's got a different opinion and you just kind of have to figure out an approach and take some good advice and see where other municipalities have been and engage professionals that specialize in that area. But, you know, I, I, we always joke that, you know, if you have a parking problem, that's really a good thing because if you don't have a parking problem, it means you have other problems. It means no one's coming to your community. So, you know, having a parking problem isn't the worst thing. Um, you know, I say that kind of jokingly in a way, but you know what I mean? But it's true. You know, people just, you know, if you can't park in front of the store that you're going to, then you must have a parking problem. Right?
Thanks.
Yeah, I have a question, Kevin. Ellie Fite, um, I'm, this is my first year on council and no government experience prior to this. So I'm just curious. Um, you know, we make ordinances and we decide how to spend money and, you know, that's going on on a month-to-month basis. How does the comprehensive plan relate to that? Like we, we're not bound by it, I guess. So, uh, can you just talk about the relationship between the plan and then future policymaking?
Sure. So I mean, a, a comprehensive plan is your policy document. It has goals and objectives and, and those are your policies. And, and they're, they're usually bigger.
Not bound by it, right?
You're not directly bound by it. However, the MPC does state that your zoning ordinance needs to be in conformist with your comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And so the fact that you're, when you update your plan, if your zoning ordinance is outdated and in, in respect that you figure out your ordinance is not consistent with your plan as it's updated, then you know, a typical program is you update your comprehensive plan, you update your zoning and subdivision ordinance following that. So we all know, no, if you don't know, a zoning warrant is a live document. It doesn't just sit there. We're done. We don't have to touch it anymore, you know? Well, some people think that.
What's that, MPC?
I'm sorry, Municipalities Planning Code, Act two forty.
Say it again?
MPC, the municipalities, Pennsylvania.
Oh, MPC, okay. Got it. Yeah. Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Okay.
Other question, staff as well, uh, or anyone in the audience as, as well. Any, any other questions or, or thoughts for Kevin?
I don't mean to push you.
Kevin, there was a couple of closing thoughts or, or comments you wanted?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things, just kind of as reminders. Um, one is, I mentioned the Urban Centers Forum. It's an event that I run every year as urban planner. I, my primary responsibility is to our sixteen, uh, urban centers, our fifteen boroughs in the city of Coatsville. And so I run an event every year for that. Um, this year doing things a little bit differently. We're kind of having three regional focus meetings. And so we hope you can join, uh, Oxford, West Grove and Avondale at the Southern Chester County Urban Centers Forum in West Grove. It's on Thursday, October twenty-fourth from five to seven P M. At the West Grove History Museum. Um, there'll be, there'll be snacks provided. Um, we're going to talk about success stories and as well pose challenges, uh, both to one another. And then I'll try to uh, provide whatever answers and solutions I can. And if I can't find the answer, I'll try to come back with an answer. But it's a good opportunity, you know, to talk with the other municipalities in your region about, uh, what your, your, your challenges are. And as well, I'll try to provide whatever assistance that I can. Um, as well, the CRP, uh, the community, Chester County Community Development, that's D C D, uh, Community Revitalization Program, CRP. We love our acronyms. Um, that is capital improvements money from the county for our urban centers. Kennet Square is one of them. You've taken advantage of the program in the past. Um, this is capital improvements money for municipally owned property. Um, and the next round will be the spring of next year. Um, the, the program switched in twenty twenty-three from an annual program to an every other year program. So spring of twenty twenty-five will be the next round. So just be aware of that. And as well, mostly for Kyle, uh, but for you as well, for any projects that you're thinking about applying for that money. Um, it needs to be either in your comprehensive plan, your urban centers revitalization plan, which probably not going to have updated by the spring of twenty twenty-five. Um, but the urban centers improvement inventory, which is something that I manage, is a way to get on that list. So just make sure any project that you intend to apply for is on the U C I I coming up. And then lastly, um, we have a new program or part of the Vision Partnership Program, and that is what we call our mini, mini grants. And these are, are smaller projects. It's not tied to our cash grant rounds. They're as an ad needed basis. And so these are targeted for smaller projects such as a targeted zoning update or an official map, some smaller projects that the municipality might want to do, um, and just contact us for any information on that. And that's really all I have. And you're always welcome to, you know, talk to me, Kyle and, and staff, contact me on a fairly regular basis about anything and everything. And that's, that's why I'm here. So, no problem. Now I guess I'll turn it over to Mary Francis.
Thanks very much, Kevin. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Mary Francis probably, uh, spends more time in Kennet Square than most other municipalities that she's in, in, involved in. Senior Vice President of Business Development. What the heck is C C E D C, Mary Francis?
Chester County Economic Development Council. Okay. We're the economic development agency for the county. Um, and I'll give you a quick intro on, on who we are and what we do. Um, and then I'm just going to jump into a couple of points that Kevin picked up. And I would tell you that I personally am working on my township's comp plan at the moment with, uh, West Whiteland. And so we're in the middle of a lot of the evaluation of our opportunities and where we can see an opportunity of, for growth. And then what is our zoning code, et cetera, that's, uh, in place at the moment? And what would help or hamper that opportunity, right? Where's, where is that little po, those little pockets of growth and what do we really want to see? So I would just suggest to you to think about that. And, and I have one slide in the end where I ask you to just sort of contemplate that. So, uh, it'll tie pretty much right into, into Kevin's, um, commentary. So C C D C, we're over sixty years old. Uh, we have a six million dollar operating budget. We're a private, um, nonprofit organization founded by a piece of legislature back in the nineteen seventies. We have a forty-two person staff. I have to look at that number because sometimes it changes overnight. Um, twenty-nine full-time employees and the balance are, um, generally under workforce development and are, um, um, comprised of people who are granted, you know, uh, working under a grant opportunity. Our board of directors are about thirty-five business and community leaders, as well as government officials and, um, emeritus, uh, positions. We work in four key areas. So some would say, what the heck is economic development? And we actually say it's four key things, right? Everybody needs a place to operate their business. That's location services and that's my purview. I'm usually working in that area, uh, pretty strongly. Um, every business needs capital. So we have a strong working backward, back office bank. Um, we have a strong S B A team. They do, um, also do the grants and any of the funding that comes through state programming. Um, we have the, every business needs staff, right? They need, uh, workers. So we spend a significant, and we're the man of our staff is on workforce development and they're in five key industries, which I'll show you in a minute. And then innovation and, um, entrepreneurship. We do everything from small product-based companies to tech companies, people who are developing apps, and we support their, uh, initiatives with, with funding as well as with um, training dollars, things like that. So we'll jump, whoop, we'll jump right back into workforce development entrepreneurship. So recently we received a one point eight million dollar grant and it was for project reconnect. This was a workforce development project where we've identified, uh, community and college, uh, community colleges and other, um, higher ed institutions of higher education, as well as certification programs to try and find students to finish their programming in the next year, right? They go, they were given one full year to do that. Some had moved away. They had, you know, moved away from their degree program. They had student loans. They couldn't pay the bills. They needed transportation. So we had a hundred eleven students enrolled. We had ninety-eight that graduated and they are moving on to hire, right? That's supposed to fill the pipeline. They're moving on to better jobs. A hun, one point eight million dollars we deployed in under eighteen months. It was huge. Our new business champion program, this county gave us ninety-eight thousand dollars to work with small product companies, um, to try and give them little grants, little professional fee grants to help them, um, identify a piece of their business they were having to struggle with. Was it their business plan? Was it their financing? Did they need QuickBooks training? Did they need a marketing website? Did they need legal fees? And new business champions placed that ninety-eight, um, thousand dollar grant with the county, with the county through March of twenty twenty-four. And now we have a program and a model to be able to help really, really small businesses where we did not have it before. We have Pennsylvania Catalyst Fund. The Catalyst Fund is with five counties and we're deploying three point three million in grant funding, but we match it with money from banks that need what they call, um, CRP, right? They need credits in their back office banks. They're matching that. So really what's out on the street is six point six million dollars to set the socially and economically, um, disadvantaged individuals. And we had twenty-four borrowers take advantage of this. So this is a pretty interesting, um, product for us as well because we never had this in our arsenal before. So our S B A team is called Seed Company P A. The Seed Company is Southeast Economic Development Company of Pennsylvania, and it's southeast because we do loans in fifteen counties across the state, not just in Chester County. We are now also in Delaware. How about that? Entrepreneurship and, um, in, and, um, innovation. We're sponsoring or co-sponsoring the Lion Cage Pitch for people who have, um, you know, entrepreneurial ideas and want to try to get out there and get in front of somebody and get some feedback. They're also going to be given some really great prizes from five thousand to fifty thousand dollars in the Lion Cage, um, competition. So if you know anybody who's a garage entrepreneur and they're, you know, they like to tinker and come up with a project, send them over to the Lions Pitch and see if they can, the Pitch Cage, and see if they can come up with some, with some cash to help build their business. We also are doing Ignite, the Entrepreneurship Conference. That will be in the fall, in the spring. And that's actually with our new business champions. We're going to sponsor, um, highlight them and, and make them have their own sort of, um, highlighted, um, event. These are the key industries that we support agriculture, of course, is number one, manufacturing, technology, energy and life science. That's all part of the governor's ten-year strategic plan where they're calling for us to coordinate between E D Cs and municipal government and try and find opportunity in some of these competitive products, uh, competitive sites and, and try to focus on challenges and growth issues, specifically power and infrastructure, right? We've talked about a lot of that, um, before. Uh, you've, you've heard it before. Power is critical and aging infrastructure is, is really also, you know, driving a lot of the funding that the governor is putting behind his, um, ten-year strategic plan. Some of the tools that the governor is also trying to fund are, um, these three major grant opportunities. P A Sites is helping that strategic investment. Um, they're enhancing industrial sites. I was on the, um, phone today with Brian Eckert. He is the program manager in Harrisburg. This is not for residential projects or multi-use or mixed-use projects. This is to develop industrial sites where we can attract business, right? We're, we're in a, we're in a fight every day. We're against other states for our sites. Um, working with Team Pennsylvania, Team P A. Right now I put a list together of six possible sites that are not being marketed by a broker. They are sort of, um, you know, they would call them a pocket listing, right? Mayor Fettick, I'm sure you know about those, um, in your day job. But, um, these are sites that are out there, but are um, un- unquantified right now that we really want to try and get better information on and put them on the Team P A list. We just submitted six of those and hopefully any other, uh, information that they're looking for, they'll be back to us to try and understand that. Main Street Matters is really important for you, the core, your core downtowns and your surrounding neighborhoods. Um, if there's improvement that needs to be done, you can use it for facades. You can use it for streetscaping. You can use it to build over retail spaces. Main Street Matters is really great. It's up to a million dollars. So if there's somebody who's really, you know, got a, a problem with a project that you're looking at, this is it. It's, um, open now and the funding is in place. The Neighborhood Assistance Program is really for how to affordable housing programs, community services, crime prevention, things like that, drop training, neighborhood assistance. This is important. Um, but it's mostly important for, um, communities that have, um, small pocket neighborhoods that are ailing, that might need to be, um, you know, brought back into the, in, in, you know, uh, re-envisioned, you know? And so these neighborhood assistance programs are really important. They actually are a tax credit program, however. So you have to have a, it's a little bit of a, a cat and a dog, you know, chasing each other. You have to have a business who's willing to try and give the contribution so that they can take advantage of the sixty-five percent credit, or if they take a six-year investment, they can take up to ninety-five percent. So it's actually a pretty, a pretty good payback. So what are some of the, what are we seeing in the market? And this was some of the things Bob and I have talked about, and I give this, um, some of this updates like a couple of times a year, and I really try to get back into some of the weeds and I, um, use a lot of, um, the, the commercial real estate information and their data. And so I just refreshed this, um, two weeks ago for Phoenixville Borough, oddly enough. So, um, it was sort of timely that I didn't have to do too much crunching, but you know, this quipper dance with hybrid and remote workers continues. You all see it. You know it. You know how the traffic is, is, um, on Mondays and Fridays, it's a lot lighter than it is, you know, Tuesday through Thursday. And the Philadelphia office vacancy right now is hovering around twenty-one percent, but the suburban, suburban market's lagging behind at twenty-two. This is from Newmark, um, from Newmark's data. Life sciences and tech growth continue to, uh, fuel the demand for collaborative space. And strong amenity-based properties are really the ones that have good occupancy. The ones that don't beat class and spaces and below just don't have those occupancies that, that you need to sustain the market. Suburban markets now are closer to residential development and workers want to be closer to home. And when you have a really good community like the Kennet Square Borough, you want to balance that industry along with living in residence and retail opportunity, right? And with that great balance, um, you, you really, that's where you bring some of that, you know, we want to see how is that, um, that homework are going to begin to dictate, you know, that there's going to be other changes. Workspace here is a great example. They're really busy. They're full. They're right on Main Street and, and they're doing great. Um, big questions, however, with the cost of construction, how it went up. Now we're beginning to see a little bit of the interest rates go down prior to the election. We'll see if we get a little bit of a change around with adaptive reuses, but we're really seeing, we're really watching the REITs, right? The real estate investment groups are looking at, um, two-story and sort of three-story flex office buildings because the gray tsunami is coming. The gray tsunami is twenty thirty. That's however you describe, um, what you consider, um, the, um, baby boomer generation. If you think it ended in nineteen sixty, some argue it ended in nineteen sixty-four, but however you describe that generation, in twenty thirty, they'll all be sixty-five. So there's a huge investment right now in, on the office side, on conversion opportunities, seconds, two-story and three-story buildings to try and look at them for, you know, um, senior housing and/or healthcare opportunities for the future. And I'm hoping they're looking at it really well because I'm going to need it, right? Um, okay. So also that's going to impact the labor force. So we've, we've really got to, we really got to pay attention to what's going on with the market uh, in, in office. Now retail continues to be experiential and old shopping habits, right, are, have really changed. And alls we see on the streets are Amazon and, and truck deliveries, right? And everybody is on neighborhood posting that your packages are being taken. So, you know, pay attention to your community. Keep your eyes open. Look at your neighbors and everybody, you know, remember that we need to take care of each other. Industrial, um, trends are really interesting too. Transportation and supply costs have really driven strong demand for well-located properties in that last mile distribution. But I would tell you that in Euclid Township where Portman was developing I seventy-six, which I don't know why they call it I seventy-six Industrial Park. It's just, it should be, you know, should be something else. Should be the Downey Town Exit, you know, industrial business park. Euclid welcomed people to a public meeting and said, welcome to Euclid Township, the place where we have industrial warehouse, but we have no tenants. So that market has changed, right? There's been a huge shift again away from large industrial space. And now they're back into the township to change that big plan from big box warehouses to small owner occupied industrial spaces. So here we are again, right? Who's driving the economy here in Chester County? Manufacturing. Older industrial stock was really important about two years ago. Post, um, COVID, right? All of the money was going to improve their buildings. We got to stay. We got to, you know, got to beat a little engine that could. We think we can. We think we can. Well, guess what? The infrastructure problems continued and so nobody could buy, uh, could find a space that had water, sewer, utilities, power. So what did they do? They bought the old industrial stock and scraped it. And now you see new buildings being built upon, um, areas that had that, um, opportunity, those platforms there, those concrete slabs ready and stormwater management already in place. So it saved a lot of the old stock and has put it back into reuse, but they're brand new buildings. Design changes and demand for users are impacting local code. You don't have as much industrial here as you might like. You might like a little bit more, but we're move, we're going to move somebody out of Southern Chester County. We're going to move an industrial user out to a greenfield development because we need sixty feet clear. We need sixty-five feet clear height on the building. And why? They need cranes. Right? It's a, it's about cranes. So the building's going to look like a church with a crane down the middle and opportunity on either end to, for entrance in, offload, use the crane, right? And product out the back, in, back it up, in goes the crane. And product out the back, in, back it up, in goes the crane, out goes the product. And that's really because that, what they're, and their semiconductor business. You just heard Sue Walker talk about that, how important that is. So, you know, municipal code had to give them a variance, right? They were doing a buy rate industrial use except for the ceiling height. So, and they got it. Thank goodness that they did or else they were not going to stay. We were going to lose them to not even Maryland, probably, probably farther south than that. Adaptive reuse of flex properties. Again, that healthcare facilities redevelopment opportunities are going on. So what has happened in the county? And Kevin can probably tell you because, you know, he lives in the county records. But I love the subdivision and land development reports by the county. If you look at them, you will see that there's been a huge investment in education and healthcare. This list alone just shows you that the education investments. Unbelievable. From East Whiteland all the way down to, you know, West Brandywine, Malvern Borough, everybody, you can just see them. I don't have to go over them. They're all in the plans, they've all been planned and approved, and they're all putting huge investments in education. Industrial and institutional, I highlighted that because the bottom two are industrial, West Whiteland and East Whiteland. But the top two are institutional. The one most specifically, when you go into High Street and you're, you know, that old quality inn, right? They're going to build 184,000 square feet of assisted living there. And then 117 is self-storage. I guess one goes with the other, right? You have to empty out the house to go into the unit. So I guess they go together. And telemetry extension in the ER for peoli. And then mixed-use, what's going to happen with the corporate parks? Right? What's going to happen? What's going to happen with McFarlane Road? What's going to happen with, you know, our office parks? We're not really sure. But Philadelphia Suburban Development has a plan for 130 senior housing units as part of redevelopment of Great Valley Corporate Center. So again, that's what we're seeing. We're seeing that conversion, right? That switch. What are the market challenges? Power and housing. Right now, the question is not, is not about a site that's out there. You don't go and market a site and say, oh, and then call the broker up and say, okay, tell me what the zoning is. They're not even asking about zoning anymore. They're asking is the power there? Power is trumping zoning. Housing, shortages of workforce, affordable-priced housing. It's not just a crisis here, it's a crisis across the country. We're all trying to solve it in our own communities the way we see best. I'm not here to tell you what to do. I'm here just to, you know, underscore that you're not alone. And on the power side, I do want to say, I personally am working with a power task force at the Economic Development Council. And one of the takeaways that we had from our second working group was to try and map the industrial sites that are out there and what power is available. And so working with the GIS team at the county, we're going to take a look at the entire county map. We're going to take the data and make a secondary map and overlay it with all the industrial properties. And then we're going to put the substations where they're next to. So it's going to be an interesting, it's going through a heat map with PICO. They're going to give us their guidance with their, using their heat map and then try and find where the capacity is. So we'll be able to show you where, you know, development can actually, can actually go. So what's Kennet Square? Kennet Square's always been the sweet spot, right? Always, always been the sweet spot. You've always been a seed as ahead of the curve. You understand the benefit of people working and living and socializing in your downtown. You recognize the need for a Main Street manager. You have multi-municipal efforts that have paid off with your Kennet Greenway project, you know, from Marborough to New Garden. I mean, you're the envy of an awful lot of communities. You saw your need for your library and your YMCA. Your YMCA for as long as I can remember, and I've been here for over 30 years. The YMCA was like the home, you know, the home where everybody went to and communicated with each other. And now look at your beautiful library. Strong affiliation with Longwood Gardens and the benefits of that partnership, right? If there is a demand driver, we should be looking at Longwood Gardens to try and figure out how to partner more because they are the demand driver. They are the big 30-pound gorilla in the marketplace. So how do we partner more in Kennet Borough with them? Again, you know, your festival just got an award, got your mushroom drop, the creamery, you got your pop-up gardens, the brew fest, the garage. It goes on and on, right? You guys are doing so many things right here. So many people want to be, you know, there are other communities that want to be you. This community, strong community providing services to, there's CACs and Senior Center and others. They're the envy of many, many other communities. So I applaud that. But my questions for you would be, what do you want to see happen? You're looking at your comp plan, number three, this third question down. What are your developable opportunities? And what do you have planned for those areas? What do you see them becoming? Where do you want housing to be developed and go? Where will affordably fit into that plan? You have to have a thought of that. You have to have a thought of that. Will your zoning support your opportunities that you want to drive, whatever that vision is, to that opportunity? Is it going to be supported by your existing ordinance today? And provide the vision for that next 10 years, like Kevin is asking you to do. And then how can we help? I'm always here to help. I'm always here at least to make a call for you if I can. So that's what I have for you tonight. I don't know if that was what you expected, but I'm here to answer any questions.
It was perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much for the opportunity.
Can you share some of the specific projects that you have been involved with in Kennet Square?
Oh, man, it goes back a long time. So, so my background is in real estate. I was a commercial real estate broker. So I bring all that development experience to my role in the Economic Development Council. And I've been there 12 years, October 1st, and it's been a great, a great thing. I really love what I do. Initially, when I came to, so when I, when I first started working in the southern part of the world, I was actually working on a project for the Arch Diocese of Philadelphia. And they were investigating whether or not they wanted to put another high school here in the South. And so I got to know a lot of people, a lot of landholders, and most of them were mushroom people. And they were exceedingly gracious and helped me understand where the pockets of land and where they were around the whole southern part of the county. And so I got to meet a lot of people from Kennet Square from jump in that opportunity. I worked with the Borough specifically when we were trying to look at ways to evaluate your municipally-owned property and get a third-party, you know, independent view of whether they were being, they're being as valuably used as they could be. And could we perhaps find those pockets of opportunity by maybe, you know, purchasing another parcel that was adjacent to it or whatever? And so I, we didn't get into that because at the time, there was a residential discussion about whether or not we could take a place in a discussion where the Borough could give us a piece of parcel, a parcel of land in a residential development plan in which we could become the, it could be conveyed to us without going through the public process. And because we were working on with you, with your revolving loan fund for McFadden Restaurant so many years ago, and we were working with, you know, Joe Scalise back in the day on the parking garage rack pee. And, you know, there, it just goes, it sort of goes on and on. And my most recent unfortunate work is, has been really working with the Genesis team to try and find the best use for 101 and 128. So, you know, I feel like my heart's, my second heart is in Kennet Square. But I do, I really love what I do. I really, I really want to make an impact. And, you know, I've been, I've been down here a long time and I really love it.
Evan, we very, very much appreciate what you've done and what CCEDC has done for the Borough.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for the opportunity.
Questions or thoughts for anyone, audience as well? Are there any no-brainers? Are there any things you say, guys, you got to take advantage of this opportunity in the Borough?
No, I really, I really think that you said which Borough, which one would you say when you asked Kevin that question? And I was thinking, how would I answer that if you asked me that question? And I think each one has really great strengths and they all would tell you that they have issues as well. No one is, no one's going home at night not worrying about something, right? And if you really looked at your demographic, you probably are very similar to a Westchester, but you're smaller, right? You don't have the width and the depth and you don't have industry, the depth of industry as well as they do. And so is that good or better? The idea is to have a balance. The best idea is to have as much balance as you possibly can, right? And so you can't be, like a couple of communities we know that are in the neighborhoods, in our neighborhood that have gone on the absolute other side of open space and now recognize, geez, we have no ratables. We got to, we got to, you know, we got to, we got to do something or we're not going to be able to maintain our open space. So we don't, you got to have that balance. So I wouldn't say, I would say, Westchester also has those little pockets of small economic challenges, right? So where you might have a neighboring property that you're, that you would like to see something happen with. I don't, I wouldn't use the word blight in any of, in any of those terms. But Kyle and I, and I don't know if there was anybody else in the room, we were listening to a housing discussion the other day. And now there are some tools that are available that we can go to the county on a land bank opportunity if there is a blighted property. And the town, the Borough would be willing to forego your tax base. And the county could take possession of that property through a land bank opportunity. That's terrific. And then what can happen is the Housing Kens, Kyle will tell you that name Kens Group again is the Housing Partnership of Chester County. They have this conservancy opportunity that they would try and put that back in, bring the house back up to, you know, a more modern standard and then try and put a family into it. That's what you want, right? You want families in your community. And they have a $40,000, you know, first-time buyer, you know, assistance program. They put the whole three pieces together. I think that's terrific. So that's great. But, you know, you're, you're not just, you're not just one street either. You're not Oxford, you know, you're bigger than that. And, and I just think that you're, you have such a rich history here, you know, that it's just, there's just so much good going on that I just think if we, if you can really look at the pockets of opportunity when you look at your map and see what's open and available and then where are your problem spots? Admit what your issues are and then try and find that best resolution to help them and make sure that your zoning is, is working accordingly. You know, Gene Crack in Phoenixville would tell you that, yeah, the apartments are a blessing, but they bring a lot of traffic, they fight over parking spaces, right? They've changed the zoning on the parking. I would call him and say, you know, what's the magic number? Is it 1.4 spaces? You know, isn't, if it's not two for a one-bedroom, what is it? You know, use, use their collective experience and, and take in, you know, you're great at it. You're happy to pick up the phone and say, you know, what did you find? And I think that's great. If you're, if you're open to that, I think you'll come up with the best comp plan and you'll have the best vision for what you want that Kennet Square to be, you know, in the next 10 years.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Daniel, I think you had offered Littit's is a good example. Littit's.
Yeah, Littit's is very cute.
Was there another?
Yeah, but you know, like, like Wayne is Route 30. This is not Route 30, right? Right? Route 1 goes past you. Kennet is a destination and you continue to keep providing opportunities for it to be a destination for people to come here. They come here for the Mushroom Festival. They come here for all these great, you know, I just was passing by. I really wanted, my car wanted to go to Braylock when I was coming by because the game was on, the doors were open, right? I was, I was coming here, though. And I, I think that's, you're getting that. It's, you're making it a destination. You're not, people are not flying by you on the bypass, right? They are coming into your community. And that's important because part of the challenge for the hotels that we did have look at, the Genesis, at least the 101 building, they said, you're not, you're not off of the major highway, right? You know, people don't know you're there. What am I going to do? Send them, you know, seven miles away from Longwood Gardens? That, that's just not how, unfortunately, the people today are just not like that. It's not that, you know, gratification, right? Immediate gratification. They want to see the sign and they want to see the building. And, and that was a challenge for them. We've had, we had quite a number of them look at it, however.
Matt has said more than once that really Kennet Square is a tourist town, right? It's a big part of our economy.
I think it's the, it's the next, I think it's our economic engine potential. It's not going to be manufacturing. It's not going to be, I think, what, you know, our potential economic and our workforce, job opportunities, I think, are in hospitality.
Absolutely.
I think that's where, I think our workforce housing, again, because it's not many manufacturing, really comes through tourism. And that's, that's where we're employed.
So in Cypress on State, can those workers live above those restaurants and retail spaces? And, and should, and should they be able to? And if they can't, then how are they, you know, how are you going to actually proliferate that? Because if you don't have those, and then you don't have those teens that are going to come in and be those, you know, workers of the, of the future. So there's some things, you know, there's some, some really hard questions, some trade-off questions that everybody, they struggle. But just right recently, I was just working with a guy on a Berwyn Square and they're taking this old, you know, blighted parking lot and a garage and they're going to put retail and residential above and tie it into the train station. You don't have rail either. And that's, you're one of the, you know, you're one of the bigger revenue boroughs in the county, but without, without rail and/or a substantive amount of transportation. And so, you know, again, why is that? Why are you, why are you revenue positive, you know, when you still have those negative detractors? It's because you're driving people here. You're a destination. So I would embrace that and do as much as I could to try and understand that.
Really, do you have a?
I was just going to ask you if you think being known for like mushrooms to be like a positive or negative thing?
It's massively positive. It's massively positive. I can't tell you how many companies that come to our county when we talk about that. They said, yeah, I read in a book that you're, that you have like the Mushroom Capital. You know, North America is located in your county. And we say, yes, we do. Yeah, it's, it's, it's so unique, right? And it's quirky and it's, 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 it's generationally cool because it's mostly family businesses. And Chester County has been built on family businesses. So, you know, I think it's, I think that it's very, very positive. We had, we had a company from Switzerland called FRU, F-R-U-H. They're a packaging company. And the guy with his broken English, he got, he got through Mushroom Capital all the world to me. So I got it. I knew what he was talking about.
The other angle that Mike Bontrager and team have been really positive on and supporting is the Underground Railroad, which is not a big part of the lore.
Well, I would say to you again, you know, I'm in the Economic Development Council. And so whenever county government starts something, they say, we need somebody from economic development. And they usually send me. And I'm on Chester County 250, right? And 250 is cataloging all of our county's treasures. And really, what we want it to be is about your phone, right? We want everybody to be able to take your phone and go stand in front of a historical asset and be able to understand what it is, whether we have somebody doing a dramatic, right, reenactment of what happened there or if they're reading, you know, texts, like we're getting a book read to us or we're reading it ourselves, right, from a QR code. Yeah, and, and we're, and we're trying to do that across the county and be ready for our celebration and, you know, in '26. And Underground Railroad is a huge part of that. It's so big. And tying those assets up and down the East Coast, right? It's not, it's a country celebration, right? But, you know, of course, we want Chester Counties to be awesome, which it will be. But it's, that's, that's big, Bob. That's really, really big. And I think that if we do, when we do it right, not if we, when we do it right, and you're able to use those phones, it's going to be for perpetuity. It's not just going to be for 2026. You know, 2030, you're still going to be able to pick up your phone and be able to look up something and stand in front of it and really enjoy it. And that's, that's what I think all the excitement is, to try and get it ready and be ready to enjoy them all. So, yeah.
Other questions coming?
So with the Genesis Building?
Yeah.
Is there other thought processes as a council that we should be considering?
I would tell you that your council has been exceedingly open and conversational with both offers. And I'm very grateful for all that because whenever there's a hurdle, you know, it's Mary Frances, we found this. And then it's like, okay, well, what can we do to, you know, to mitigate it? Maybe not solve it, but mitigate it. And I would find, say to you that all of your conversations with these potential users have been very positive and that they have always felt that, especially the last one, has really felt that there would really, they were not, not going to get there. has really felt that there would really, they were not, not going to get there. Just became a little bit of a push-pull at the end and, you know, they didn't extend their due diligence, period. So, and I really feel like I, I have this fiduciary responsibility, the Genesis team, you know, they really, really do want to see something happen here. I don't want to let it go to a situation where there may be like an, you know, an auction for the buildings because I still don't believe that if we do that, that the people who would be the buy, potential buyer, would understand the value of those buildings, which is the reason why they didn't really hire a registered broker in the first place. That doesn't mean that they won't going forward, but they're, they are back on the market and I sent out an information package yesterday. So, anybody you know, tell them to call me. Thanks so much for your time. It's really fun.
Thank you.
Talking to you.
Ed Score?
Yes, Captain.
The Mets one.
That's fair.
She says with a smile.
Long-suffering Mets fan here.
Any, any other comments before we close the meeting? Kyle, anything anyone needs to know or you want to share? Oh, excuse me, excuse me. See where the priorities are.
One thing, one small thing, excuse me, the budget. Kyle, your show.
We'll try to keep it brief, Bob. Just, I mean, quick, just for what it's worth, the four kind of public people you have here, four of the best ones that we work with. So Ed, Daniel, Kevin, and Mary Frances, they, they do three things, right? They're knowledgeable, they're accessible, and they really care about Kennedy Square, which is tough when you've got, how many 60-something municipalities? So just for what it's worth, they really are the favorites, yeah. So I'll, I'll keep it brief because honestly, a lot of this is process-based and I understand we're, so we'll go through kind of the budget process, which we've talked about ad nauseam, a couple of personnel, you know, swaps we've made. Have a good night. Capital investment and then questions, discussion. So first, everyone has heard this many times, right? This is the third part of our annual process. You have the strategic plan typically in the spring. I suggest doing that every other year to line up with council terms. The capital planning, which we just adopted with tonight's budget. Rob, Nick did a really good job with that. There's a lot that goes into that. And then the budget itself, which is essentially, you know, if you've got your big rocks, right? These are little stones that fill it in, not to make light of it, but it's, you, you need to have pencils and pads of paper and computers to do the, and people to do this work that, that, you know, you can't just do Bird Street, right? You need people to do that. I would add into that, right, to, to some of the things that Kevin talked about, right? On top of all of this is your comprehensive plan. So that's your plan for development. That's, you know, I think in the last one, it called for development of a library, right? So Bob and Matt, you guys had a lot to do with that. We've built that, so we, we did it. Now it's time to do the next thing. Really, this is, you've heard this before, it really is valuable to hear what the direction is in these, these annual or biannual meetings because it really directs our staff with limited staff time and resources, just knowing where that direction is really is helpful. So we appreciate that. Again, I'll highlight, right, 13th consecutive clean audit. So I'm really proud of what we're doing. There was a lot of great work before, you know, Nick and I got here as well. That's really difficult to do with a staff of our size, so it's great work. And the excellence in budgeting is a really significant accomplishment. You know, we, we have such a small team that when we talk about reorganizing staff, it's pretty small changes, but we think they're pretty targeted and pretty purposeful. So we've shifted, last January, February, our full-time assistant finance person left. So we've been really fortunate to bring on someone part-time who has a lot of experience, fits into our team really well. We've also, over the last year, pivoted our planning, zoning, and code enforcement operation from three full-time to two full-time and a part-time with some contracted services in there. And I would argue that we've got a really great staff now in both of those areas. And we're using those savings to then pivot to where I think we could use some more help, which is a part-time streets employee, which we had had a few years back, as well as a part-time admin for, for Public Works. So if you sort of think about, right, how's our budget changed over the last, say, three years? It's really been a shift towards investing in capital improvement. That was a priority of council. Council took, you know, a tough vote to do that. And we've done a really good job of then supplementing that with grants. This is the supporting piece to be able to do that, which is staff on hand to process all these things and to manage these things. And, you know, it's, at some point, you have to support your staff when you're expanding their scope of service. Next. Yep, we talked about this. Thank you. And then, yep, so this is, you know, it's not just coming from one person's head, right? It's, there's a lot of talk and discussion that goes into it. We, you know, we're pretty open that we had a lot of staff turnover in 2023, you know, even including their 2022. And I'm really proud of the fact that, you know, in '24, we've had pretty limited. I think the only one was technically in January, the one person left. We may get a retirement at some point later in '24, but that's, you know, we're pretty proud of that. And I, I would argue we've brought on some really good people. I would argue that just about every hire because of our size, right? We have to find people in this particular moment in their life, right? So they're either looking for part-time, they're looking for a leadership opportunity in a smaller town, they are from the area looking to get in the public sector, right? I can go through each of our employees and figure out, how is it that we managed to get a person when they are such a great employee? So I'm proud of that. And continuing capital investment. So, you know, if you remember, right, historically, we were, we were pretty low and that's just because of what we, that's what we were able to do. Council before this one really invested in that and we've kept that where it is. And again, just supplementing it with grants. So I don't have the exact number on hand, but something like nine million has come in in grants over the last three years and something like two million worth of either developer contributions or just actual donations. So take your, yeah, take your $400,000 a year and, you know, supercharge it and, and the quirk of this is that we often end up using our capital funds as matches, right? So that's the reason to protect those funds so strongly is that they're worth two to three times that amount. So it's, trust me, it is nine. So it's, it is nine, but, and, yeah, so it's, it's just what we talked about. So a couple of the things that we're investing in is the police station. Obviously, that's, you know, hoping to open up here in October. Chief and Rob have done a lot of work on that. A couple headaches too. It's actually why they have some gray hairs. So they didn't have any before this. One million for their sewer plant. So that came in, I believe it was awarded this year. Bird Street's getting started here, hopefully in the next month. Paving plan, continuing to pave, you know, seven, eight roads a year, which is a significant uptick. Speed tables along our Main Street. And really, there's a lot of front-end work on that so that when we continue to do these, they're going to be systematic, they're going to look the same, they're going to feel the same across town. And this has actually already been done as of now. So it's posted everywhere, it's live, people can check it out. I just caution that, you know, it's, it's still in flux, right? So your revenue numbers are not coming from the county until really November. We're still fleshing out, you know, is somebody going to retire in December or is it January, right? Some of those impacts, but for the most part, it's a solid sense of where we're going. No, I don't think so. No, but, no. So are there any questions? I mean, it's largely internal at this point, but are there questions? That's, that went live here during this discussion.
Okay. Yep. Thanks, thanks to the department managers and Nick certainly is, for all the work you do on this, this year, it's, it's critical to what we do. We have a very challenging budget year, that's for sure. That's for sure. Now, are there any other questions or comments or anything anyone wants to say?
I think that we're lucky to have a really dedicated staff that work hard with all the challenges that we have and put on us. Thank you.
Second now. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight. Good evening.